We'll call the meeting to order. All right, open remarks. This meeting of the Reading Minister for Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held.
Recording in progress.
Oh, thank you. It's being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of official, on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair. Let all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussions. All right. Mr. Pacino?
Yeah.
Are you, uh, you're the, you're going to be the Board Secretary?
Yes, I will most happily, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, all right, um, one, one quick comment. There was a, if there are folks from the public in the meeting. I, I see a few other folks on here tonight. I know we said we were going to raise our hand and then you would be have asked to exit the meeting and then watch on RCTV. That, that, you know, was a mistake on my part. It was a misinterpretation of, of, uh, I, I, I would like the public to stay in the, in the meeting. So again, it's just a slight change to the agenda that was published, but anybody who wishes to stay can stay. Okay. All right, let's go down to item number four. Let's get right into the Commissioners' goals this evening. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to put them up. Erica, if you'd like to put up the goals.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have a, just a couple of little housekeeping things that I, I wanted Erica to chime in on and before we get started, if that's okay, Erica?
Um, so first and foremost on the housekeeping agenda is, um, are we ready to confirm the July Board of Commissioners' date for Monday, July 19th at 7:30 PM? Does that work for everyone?
Uh, we sent out the doodle and we've gotten most of them back. I just think if you want to send back the doodle, I don't think we've gotten one back from.
That might have been me, so it's, it's, I think that's fine.
Okay.
It's fine with everybody else. Sorry for the delay.
So I will send out a calendar confirming that, thank you. Um, the next thing on the housekeeping agenda is I wanted to provide an update on the NEPA conference. Um, just so everyone knows, as of today, registration has still not been opened. So please let me know if you do have any interest in attending and I can assist with logistics.
Erica, I'm planning to, as a matter of fact, I've even registered, I've even registered, uh, registered at the hotel at this point already, so.
Perfect, yes, I did receive your info, Phil, so thank you for that.
Yeah, we can submit the registrations, not for the hotel, but get them prepaid. So that's why Erica needs to know when, when it does open, who, who is definitely going. And we had a, um, there was one more signature required?
About two more announcements. So by that same token, um, just as an FYI, during the July meeting, we will be asking, um, whether or not we'll be skipping the August meeting, which is something that we've done in the past. So just, um, an FYI, so everyone can take a peek at their schedules before we have that meeting. And then the final announcement is just still waiting on a few signatures for the indemnification forms. Um, so if you haven't executed any of those documents, please get those back to me as soon as possible. If there's no questions, that's everything for me for housekeeping.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Um. Why don't we stop, if Erica, if you could display the goals, I think that would be helpful. We just wanted to get into the conversation.
Can everyone, um, see the RMLD goals 2021?
Correct. Okay, I, yeah, just very quickly, I, I saw the note from Dave. Dave offered, um, some modifications to the goals that were listed. I was just thinking we, we just would go down through, um, the goals. As I, I, I did like what, some of the stuff that Dave put in. So I, I think the first item that Dave suggested was, and, and this kind of throws off the numbering of, of the goals, but, uh, David added an overarching goal to perform with excellence and carrying out all the duties and responsibilities to the GM. I, 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 I like that. Uh, I don't know if, how, how the other Commissioners felt about that addition.
Can I speak, uh, Mr.?
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, I, I think that, you know, that, I think that's, uh, that's fine if you want to put that in. I think our expectations are that that's just our expectation period, uh, for that. So I'm not sure we need to clarify it, but, but if you want to, I don't really have any issue with it.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to ask a question on that. It's, I'm not, if it becomes a goal, I mean, it's, it's kind of, uh, it's in my contract. I'm supposed to be, you know, performing with excellence and running this hundred million dollar company. So I think it's already inherent in the contract language. By adding to a goal, I'm not really sure how that's measurable or what would be the discussion? If we're going to go forward and have discussions about each goal, what's the discussion? You're not being excellent? You're being less than excellent? How, how does that work? So to me, it's, it's in my contract about how I'm supposed to be, um, doing my job. So I think, I think that speaks more to my contract than, than an annual goal.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just address why, why I suggested that?
No, but.
Well, in, in reading the proposed edits to Policy 19, it was very literal. It said, "There will be goals and that these will be the things that you're, that you're evaluated on." Period, end of story. Like, it was very concrete that there would be goals. Those are the only basis of, of the performance criteria. So that's what made me add it because otherwise it, it just says the only thing we're allowed to conduct an evaluation on is what's on this piece of paper and nothing else. So that's why I did it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
If we were gonna, if we were gonna, if we were dealing with Policy 19 tonight, we could, we could make it clear that in addition to the goals, we also evaluate based on everything else the GM does. But that was my thought process.
Uh, yes, Mr. Stumpbeck.
Um, having thought about it in the last 30 seconds, I tend to agree with the general manager. It's really, you know, excellent is subjective in everybody's mind. Uh, so how do we put that into something that's concrete? And so that might be difficult. If it's already in the contract, then, um, you know, I, I, you know, why, why have to enumerate it here? I guess, I mean, we, our expectation is that, well, in the first place, Colleen has been excellent over the time period that we've had her employed. And so I think our expectations going forward are going to be exactly the same. They should continue to perform, uh, as she's performed in the past. So, you know, barring anything like that, um, I think it becomes very obvious, uh, in terms of just moving forward. So I guess I, I would take out, I'm, I guess I'm pushing back on it. I'm sorry, Dave, I just.
No, that's, that's fine. I, I hear that and I, it, what you say makes sense. I just think that we need to say if Policy 19 is going to be edited, say as it proposes, as it is proposed to be edited now, it says we can only evaluate the general manager based on whatever's in the goals. So it doesn't say, and that's, that's the policy as edited by Chris Pollard and sent to us for a vote last meeting, but we delayed it and we're not doing it tonight. So then I, I, I'm fine to back off on it as long as we go back to Policy 19 to make it clear that when we evaluate, it's based not just on the six things or whatever is on this list or whatever 10 or whatever it ends up being. If we kind of have a general understanding that that's what Policy 19 will end up saying, I'm fine to not put it in here.
Okay.
Um, can I make a clarification, please? If, if we get something from Chris Pollitt, it doesn't necessarily mean it's his red lines. I make the changes and I send it to him to make sure that it's legal, that we're not, we're not. So I just want to make that clarification. Because you get something from him does not mean that he wrote it for me.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, just then, that, all the more reason why, if that's what you've written, Colleen, just to be, I'm just saying, I read what you wrote and it says, "You will evaluate me only on these goals." And that's, those are the criteria, which now you're saying there's, it's in the, it's in the contract that there's other things. So I'm just, I just want it to be stated clearly that when around next year, it's not only did those eight things happen, but it could be anything else too.
Okay, I, I would, I might add that, you know, I, I know you all have a copy of my contract and I think it's, there's a lot of things in my contract that talk about the expectations of me running this company and what's expected of me. And I, I don't think it's anything short of excellence. The, the point I'm trying to make is making it a goal to be excellent when it's, when it's on every page.
Consider it, I, I agree with you. I, I take it back. I withdraw, I withdraw it. I just want it, just as long as we all understand that it's not just six things, whatever.
And, and we can change Policy 19, it's actually your policy, they're just suggestions.
Fine.
All I've made a comment is, is that we can't, we don't want to violate my contract, which.
No, not at all.
Okay, so you can, you, you can review me on anything. There's nothing in my contract that says you just have to come up with goals and tasks at the beginning of the calendar year.
Fine.
Their annual, okay.
Then when we get to Policy 19, we can just throw a language and saying, you know, per the contract, we will also do blah, blah, blah. And then.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, move on, okay. All right, so item number one, develop IT integrated roadmap and implement the NERC mandated cyber and physical security. Any comments on item one?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none. Item number two, complete class cost of service study, rate study and make a formal presentation on rate restructuring.
I, I have a comment on this and I, um, I appreciate, uh, Dave's comment, including new renewable and our carbon choice rate, and I agree. The problem with setting the goal this way is, um, we're going to present to you, um, what we're, you know, Greg gave you kind of a, kind of a teaser the first, uh, last month about where we were going with the, with the renewable and non-carbon choices. Uh, we talked about what was happening in the other utilities, including Wellesley. And at the next presentation, we're going to take it one step further and say, okay, this is our recommendation. At the same time, we're dovetailing that into the class cost of service and then dovetailing that into preparing for the budget that starts in September. So it's kind of all of a, a sequence type thing. So my point is, is that you, you, we can't really do the class cost of service study unless we have those other things that you all have to vote on. So I agree, but it, but it's kind of, you guys got to do stuff first before I can do.
Fine, keep it separate, agree, I, I withdraw it. Uh, the only thing, when we get to that, the only thing I would say is make it achieve a new renewable and/or carbon free choice program because we might want to have a discussion over whether we really want to have two different choice programs, but that's for tonight. Maybe we'd want to, maybe we want one or the other, uh, we haven't gotten it.
Okay, well, that was actually not originally number eight, that I had that on there. So I think you took it from that and combined it, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I did. I'm saying when we get down there on, on the existing list, we could just add and/or, okay, we can move, as far as I'm concerned, we can move on.
On to the next one.
Okay. Achieve APBA, uh, best utility practice and reliable both. Comments?
Right. So the comment on this one was, um, you know, it, to, to state whether this had been achieved already or not. So we're halfway through the year and, um, you know, this is a pretty significant goal, um, for the amount of work that we had to put into it because you don't get this award unless you create all these safety programs, all the safety procedures. I mean, none of that was here. So you have to, you have to create all of that and then submit it and it took, uh, a significant amount of time to, to come to that. And we got that award. So it's supposed to be a calendar year, set a goal. So in the spirit of cooperation, when we discuss progress to date, since that one's complete, maybe we can just discuss it. But I, I don't want to eliminate these things.
Oh, no, no.
Worked really hard.
To be clear, uh, I, I, I wasn't proposing to cut it. I was just wanting to be clarified, is this something that you're trying to do again this year? I assume that it meant you were just wanting it on the record and that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Um, I, I would propose, because I, I agree, it's certainly a worthy thing to go after is strive to achieve. Maybe add a couple of words, just strive to achieve this because it's, it's not a given under any given.
I think, I think Colleen's point actually did back her up on that is that she's saying, if I understand you correctly, Colleen, that you wanted us to have it acknowledged that it was a goal and, and, and it was achieved, which is very true. And, and what we're saying here is we're not trying to have you achieve it again in the next six months. You're, it's there.
Right, it's there, right. We, we worked on it, right. We worked on it for the last year and a half and, uh, we, we wanted to achieve it and we just received it.
Yeah, 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 so that's all. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't you were trying to do again. So therefore, John, you wouldn't need to add the strive for it because we, it was achieved.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, next item, uh, continue with due diligence to determine alternative Wilmington substation land and proceed towards securing all necessary permits, regulations, transmission, interconnections, easements, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments?
No.
Yeah, I can't, I can't agree with the change of acquire because I would want nothing more in this world than to meet the word acquire. But that is, we don't own the land and we have to negotiate. So I can't say that that will absolutely be done by the end of the year. We are planning on it with, with the land that we're working on now, but you all know what happened with the National Grid land. So I think continuing with due diligence, it's one of our highest priorities in this company to get this done. But, um, there's too many barriers of things that are not within our control. I mean, look at what just happened with the town of Wilmington in trying to acquire Article 97. It's just, um.
Yeah, my, and just, and again, uh, it was my thing. I just had it be acquired through purchase or lease. And this is the reason I did that, is I know we've been talking about this for several years and I, and I also know it's critical path for reliability, right? So it was like to emphasize, let's get it done this year. Of course, it's a goal, doesn't mean it's going to get done, but just to emphasize the Commission's emphasis that we would like it to be done this year, you know, to have that site selected. Of course, it's continued, continuing with due diligence is not really a goal. It's just acquiring it or through purchase or lease would be a goal. If it's not achieved, that's all.
I think last year said something similar, but, um.
Well, that's, and that was also my point. We had it as a goal 18 months ago or something, so. I mean, I, I think, have I heard you say that how critical this is?
Well, maybe it's a definition of, um, you know, that's why we're going to, we have quarterly meetings for, for updates and stuff, um. A goal isn't, a goal doesn't always mean to complete.
Correct. But the goal is to, is to complete it, not to, the goal is to continue with due diligence.
All right, well, cooperatively then, I, I, I don't think we can commit to that.
It's a goal.
I don't think I can commit to, I, I'm not, I don't want to commit to, uh, acquiring a piece of land that I don't own. Uh, we are, it, it doesn't matter if it's, if, we, we look at leasing or buying. It's, it's, it's the owner is negotiating and it's not only one person, it's all their attorneys, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I, I defer to my colleagues. I, I, I just made my point, I think it should be number one and it should be very, more concrete than it is. But I defer, I hear your points and I defer to, I defer to my colleagues.
So, so my, my thought is I, I'd like to keep the wording as it is. I would like to move it up to number one goal as opposed to number four. Because I think this is critical for that, for the town of Wilmington. I mean, I would remember this is number one, but keep the wording as it is. You know, because you, how are you going to, you know, acquire, you know, a year from now? Who knows, we still may be in the same position. Hopefully we're not, we might.
I, I have to apologize, but I didn't write these in a list of priorities. As far as I'm concerned, I need, I need as a minimum to get all these done. You know, they're all have to get done. So I, I'm sorry, I thought I had written a note prior saying, you know, they weren't in any particular order. They're all directly impact the, the operations of this company, so, um.
Yeah, but I think this one carries much more weight than some of the others at this point.
Okay.
Going forward, because this is the reliability of the system.
Right.
There in Wilmington, so. And this should be number one goal.
Yeah, as is, um, as I may, thank you. I think as it's worded in terms of continuing with due diligence, I think that's really part and parcel of what we've been trying to do or you've been trying to do, Colleen. So I don't see any issue with that. I would move it up to number one as well. I, you know, I, I understand you didn't rank order these, but, you know, that's just our suggestion that.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's not that, um, not meeting number one, you know, but meeting all the rest, uh, is, is wrong or anything. It's just, again, it's a list of goals, but in our minds, we all rank order things, I think. So I think number one would be good, I think Phil's right.
Okay.
Erica, I, I don't know if it's possible, if you could lifetime edit? If you want to move that up, that would be great.
Mr. Chair, I may ask a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
To Colleen, if you were to rank them, and I understand that they were not previously ranked, what would you like to see as your top two?
Um. Well.
In terms of importance, not timeliness.
Yeah, um, I would agree that number four is one, is, is the top priority, the Wilmington substation. Um. The, uh, union contract negotiations is, it's like I, um, that has to happen, so, because it's a contract. So that, um, becomes a, um, a priority.
And that happens every year?
That's every three years. Uh, the contracts end at the end of this year and there's three unions and three contracts. You may have heard that the town is shoring this up, but they're on fiscal year, our contracts are on calendar year. So we start, we send a notice.
When it's, I'm just trying to understand when it's a goal or, um, normal course of business.
Um.
But sometimes it's a little bit of both.
Well, uh, we'll probably be talking in executive session at the next meeting about, um, what your, uh, goals are for me for the contract negotiations. So yes, get it, getting the contracts, uh, done is a normal course of action. The goals behind what our strategy is for will be goals and they'll be discussed with the Board in executive session. That's why it's listed as a goal.
Thank you.
Um. And, you know, we can lump together the carbon free, uh, the whole, the whole Policy 30 and the clean, uh, the clean bill has been really important. I, I want, that's way up there because I, I want to finish that up so that staff and myself and everyone's on the same page about where we're going and where we're able to fill in all of that open, uh, you know, open power supply contracts that you've seen in, in those slides over the last six, nine months. So that's really important and that actually ties then into, um, a few down the bottom, so. Um, but I think you're right, four goes number one, uh, this IT integrated roadmap. The importance with that is because of the issue that we had in IT and getting that all retooled and straight is very, very important for the security of this company as, um, as you are well aware of what you read in the news, the, the ransom attacks and things like that. In addition to our required compliance to NERC on mandated cybersecurity because it's an electric company in addition to a business company. So, um, that's why I thought it was really kind of hard to prioritize because, again, they're all, they're all, they're all have to do. They're all number one in my head, actually, so. Um. So you want to go to number five?
Yeah, we'll just continue down if.
Okay.
Erica, yep, perfect. Conduct both inside and outside expertise training on current portfolio strategy, clean bill proposal and impacts. And I think you just spoke to combining number five.
Yeah, well, that one was accomplished, so I'm speaking to that one. Um, we did all that training and hired all those, uh, outside contractors, consultants and everyone to help us with all the training to get the Board and the public trained in order to get Policy 30 approved and moved forward. Um, so that's kind of already happened. We, we finished all of the training this year that you guys actually gave me as a goal. You signed it to me and, and that's what we did, so that's kind of been done.
Okay.
Um, so number, um, number six has been, um, accomplished, uh, in the first half of the year. And number seven, Policy 30, uh, you guys signed that. We did all that work and, and were able to, uh, you know, land on something. I think the only thing that's missing of that whole project is in the RMLD Board goals on the mission statement. If you wanted to tweak that, I don't know if you recall, we had some conversation from the public about, you know, competitive pricing or low pricing and stuff like that. And it, it didn't align with maybe in the future if we wanted to, um, change our program again. So we just want to keep that in the back of our mind. Right now, we're following the law plus a linear line or granular, uh, level of meeting the law. We had to come up with the carbon, uh, programs, non-carbon programs, but I think we probably still want to take a look at that, as, as a page holder for a Policy 30 update with the mission statement. Uh, that's still on the to-do list if that's what the Board's pleasure is. Um. And then the next one, uh, commence union contract negotiations. We already kind of talked about that. We'll have to talk about the goals in next set, next meeting's, uh, executive session.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to go back real quick.
Yeah.
Very tiny thing, back on achieve a new renewable and carbon free choice. My only suggestion there is make it and/or, because I don't think we really decided what, what, which one or both or how to do those. I, we may end up with both. Once we have the discussion, it may be an or, um, I don't know. But to say we know already that we're going to do both, I think we, we haven't really decided that. So I would say add the slash or if everybody's okay with that.
I, I could, we could change that to, um, make, um, the GM to make a recommendation to the Board on a renewable and/or carbon free choice program. And we get a vote on that and that will dovetail into the cost of service and the new rate structuring that would be presented. But again, all that has to happen and get your input and your votes and the Cabs votes before, um, the budget.
I, I think the slash or, as far as I'm concerned, achieves what I was looking to do here. If you want to tweak it further, anybody else, fine.
Okay.
Any, anybody else?
Um, this is for a conversation for a later date, but having two programs sounds really confusing, but the wording for now is fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so did you want to include the GM to recommend to the Board, uh, a renewable and/or carbon free choice program?
If so, you could just change, yeah, the word achieve to recommend because it's implied, these are GM goals, so you could just recommend.
Right.
There you go.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And.
Oh, but that's all right. Yeah.
We back, oh, I can't click it. Also, I, maybe I missed it, the one about the clean bill.
Yeah.
How do you define clean bill?
The, the law that got passed.
Okay, that's where I understand, okay, so that's.
Well, it was the, it was the clean, the clean bill. And then in addition to that, what we voted on in Policy 30 was instead of decade, uh, achievements, we're making them annually in a more granular level all the way up to 2050. Right, so the bill says every 10 years, we're doing it every year.
Yes, okay, but it, but I understand clean bill is what we're calling, okay, okay.
Could actually, is it, is it possible to put a couple of words in there just making that? Maybe it's not necessary in the goals for this year because it's just this year.
Yeah, I, I, I would suggest just leave it as, as is. It's my, my opinion, um, but I don't.
That's fine, yeah, 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 this isn't the place to do it. It's a more long range thing. I get you. I'm good.
Okay, so the next one, I actually had a couple of questions on, uh, from folks. And so the generate environmental justice operating procedure. So when we presented, uh, the first Gravity Hydro, um, we were asked to speak about, um, the environmental justice and, um, and, and we did and Chuck did, you know, some investigation and we wrote something up and we, and we discussed it. And I just didn't feel comfortable with that process. I wanted something more formal, okay? So we, we've got two ends. We've got the social justice and we've got the environmental justice. So what we're doing is we're creating a procedure that will more than likely hire an outside company that will do the environmental justice for us and then provide us a report. And then that report will be, uh, attached to any renewable or non-carbon project that I bring before you. So that's what we're working on, so that it's very formal. Now. So that's what we're working on. So that it's very formal. Now, the social justice is being taken care of by the state. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to have a procedure that makes sure that we always match what the state is requiring so that we can speak to that. Again, when we submit these projects for your approval. So that was the point of those two. Um, you had asked for them and that was a way that I was creating them in a more formal. And um, consistent manner.
Mr. Chair, the, I think, I appreciate that. If I may.
Yes.
I I actually suggested deleting this because. Um, you know, I think the second, the state one is fine. And the earlier one, I think there was just a couple of us said, hey, just make sure there's not some big controversy about the dam or whatever. I don't know that you need to hire a consultant to get that answer, um, or do that due diligence on every, every non-carbon or even that many non-carbons would. Would be subject to. It's more like the fossil sites or or a biomass plant would be, but not uh, not necessarily a solar or a hydro. I mean, I may be missing something here. It just seemed like these two are redundant and. Adds as a layer that we may not need. Beyond our common sense and do just due diligence that we would do as.
If I may, Mr. Chair. In general, I would agree with Mr. Tell that, but having read some things recently about. Um, pushback in terms of solar arrays even for uh, compromising the life under them and in a desert environment. Uh, has me concerned that, you know, someone's going to be upset somewhere about whatever is happening. Uh, whether it's fish coming up a fish farm or turtles crawling under a, you know, a solar panel. Uh, so. I, I think we need to do it and. I tend to agree with uh, with, with Colleen that uh, if we do it internally, it'll be viewed as very biased. Uh, whereas if you, I know it costs money and I, but in my opinion. Um, the amount of time and effort and money we spent arguing over the last issue we had. Uh, with this, uh, it'd be well worth just trying to contract with someone that uh, does this for a living. And can do a very, hopefully a very quick and uh, come back with a good answer for us. So it's justifiable, defensible. Uh, whether it's in a court of law or the, you know, court of public opinion, uh, that we tried our best to do the right thing.
Um, Greg, Greg's online. Uh, we just finished one, I believe. Um, I don't think it's that expensive. But as John said, I think it will be worth its weight in gold. Because we have no idea if there's going to be a fish in the future that be, may become extinct because of something. So the, the. Companies look at all of the backgrounds and anything going, you know, the the buzzwords going forward. And they just give us a simple document saying that this has basically been looked at. Um, and it's an internal procedure. Okay?
Okay.
So even if we decide to do it ourselves, we're starting off by hiring this person and hopefully we are, we would share the cost with everyone else, you know?
Okay.
Because we're buying it with other people.
Okay, so that makes more sense to me, I guess, but maybe threw threw me off was. It, the way it's worded, it says environmental justice, which was refers to power plants cited in low income or communities of color. Specifically, if it's a broader thing about all kinds of environmental impacts of, you know.
My apologies. I thought that was social justice. Does, that's the, the other piece of what the state's going to be covering.
Oh, well, then that, that's, that clears it all up for me. If this is all just environmental.
There's two pieces, environmental and social. So the state's doing the social and we'll have a procedure. To adopt whatever the state's doing and we will make sure that that gets attached. Environmental, we have to do on our own.
Okay.
And and that's what it's for.
Then you want to cut the word justice out of that because you're not talking about specifically environmental justice in this one. You're talking about a broader environmental. Kind of checkpoint, like is it killing fish? Is it unsightly? Is it? So it's not just environmental justice. That, that refers to stuff put in low income neighborhoods. That's what that means.
Yeah.
So you want to cut, in the earlier one, you want to cut the word justice out of nine.
Right.
To make it more broad, a kind of broader, high level look. Then I totally make sense now. Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Um, clears the whole thing up.
Is there any discussion? Oh, Phil, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with that taking the, and I, I wonder what the heck this all was. But now they're complaining to me, I'm totally in agreement. Yeah.
I, I'm still kind of saying you could, you could take out number ten completely. And if it, because if it's a procedure that state and you have to follow it, it, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with eliminating it. Well, you can keep it, but. But um, at this point.
Well, the, our procedure, our internal operating procedure, which is this. Would instruct IRD to contact the state and get the social justice. Report for that particular project. So that's, that's what this would do so that then we can attach it to our recommendation. So you're getting two pieces of paper with every recommendation. That says it's been looked at. Check the boxes are checked.
Okay.
So we need the, we need a word next to our environmental, though. I, I, I could have sworn I read a couple of things on it. Was being called environmental justice, but I, I'll have to check that out again.
If you're talking about turtles, it's not, that's different. Yeah.
Say, does the word concerns qualify?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look it up and put it in there. I'll let everybody know what it is.
Or just review.
I like that.
It could be review. Uh. Uh, Greg, are you on here? Greg? Greg here?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
What is the environmental word?
Um, as the commission has pointed out, there's a lot of different definitions. And so I think. In this particular case, if it's focused on the environmental, which I think is your intention and our intention. Yeah, we could do environmental review, environmental due diligence and leave it fairly broad.
Okay.
And the other thing that will come up, different projects will have different levels of detail in terms of how much information. In terms of an environmental due diligence we can do. Um, so that's another element. So. I think just for simplicity, if we do environmental due diligence or environmental review. And obviously we'll finish the procedure that we started and share that with everybody. That's probably a clean way to go for number nine.
All right, thanks.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I like the word due diligence there.
Yeah, I like that too.
That's good.
Every, everybody like due diligence. I've seen a whole lot of. Greg. Okay. So now we are down to number eleven.
Yep.
Hire a consultant to develop an employee survey to be conducted in early twenty twenty-two. Um, any discussion?
It, would it be possible to pull up the proposed edit I made to that one? And then I had, and then I had a couple that other goals that I was suggesting. I don't know if anybody else has any, but. If you don't mind, you can move to the thing I sent to, to go through the things that I had in mind. So just, yeah.
We've only got six months left, Dave.
I know. Um, well, yeah, no, you're right. I take your point. Um, we're always six months behind and that's on us. Hopefully we can fix that. So my only tweaks were here were, was to say that, you know. You know, this is something where it just kind of takes something off of you that it's. We, we can, we can be reviewing and approving the list and process in advance. As far as that, that was my one sec, that's one half. And the second half, as far as timing. I understand there might be sensitivities if, if it has to do with union negotiations, then we should discuss.
Yeah.
I assume that was why you wanted to wait, but um, if so, then we should discuss an executive session if there's a union negotiation angle. On why you would want to wait, but otherwise it should, we should in a subsequent meeting just decide when we're doing this and.
Well, I don't think I would be able to get this done by the end of the year and. Uh, I actually think it was um, uh, Chair Coulter's idea to say conducted in early twenty twenty-two. That was his. Um, concept. Now, when I look at this, because uh, actually the internal. Employee survey is the last thing on the reorganizational plan that we went through for the last five years. So this has to be done. Um, but we are going to be looking at consultants that deal and change management. Uh, because what we want to make sure we get out of the questions is improvement process. You know, through HR, through talent acquisition, through talent management. Um, and so we want the consultant based on what we're trying to achieve here as goals. Uh, to tailor the questions or to develop the questions and then we can, we can bring them to the board and you guys can review them and they'll probably have um. You know, just like the customer survey, they'll probably have like, you know, ten ones that you can stick in yourself or whatever. So. We were going to try to follow the same process, but. Still a change, this is still a change management company and we. We want to do this survey and get the absolute most out of it to benefit. The change that's needed in the, and to, you know, to support the employees, but we've still got a lot to do.
Sure. And I guess the question would be, does the commission want questions about workplace culture or other things to inform us? Um, so that's why we would want to just have a, have a, a weigh in on the survey questions. And and approve them and not just say, okay, it's a survey and then we don't. We're not involved in the details. So.
Like I said.
Second, so the second sentence that I, the sentence I added, commission to review and approve question list in advance is that goes to that one. I, I take your point about timing. I guess I'd rather not just commit today that it has to wait for eight or nine months or whatever, but. And then our next meeting, maybe we can discuss why. I mean, it's not that hard to do a survey. I mean, there's. People out there that do these all day long. It's, there's questions out there. It's really not that big, that big of a deal.
Well, I, I actually think it's a very big deal because um. Because we're trying, we. We are still change management, so this isn't just a regular company and we have, you know, fifteen vacancies. Um, you know, COVID changed a lot. A lot of people want to work remote. This, this doesn't provide us an opportunity to do that. Because we're boots on the ground. So we need the questions to be done by someone. Who can help us um, achieve the goals in order for this to continue to be a successful operation. Because that's, that's what I'm in charge of. So I want to hire someone who can help us to do that. Um. I don't, I don't know.
If I may, yeah. Having, having done a couple hundred customer needs analysis surveys myself, uh, personally, I can tell you that um. It's really important to have someone who really knows what you're trying to achieve. One. Uh, and two, if, this is not a monkey's, you know, survey monkey kind of thing where you just send this thing out blindly. And get it back because these surveys, especially if you're doing them in person, they go down various channels and paths that you never expected. And you, the richness is in how you mine that and really find out either what is good, what is bad, what is disturbing people. And you really have to be sensitive to that. So it's not just a trivial, you know, one in a hundred, you know, just, just do a survey. Uh, I, I agree with Colleen. It's free. I think we need to be careful in terms of who we pick to actually do this because it's very sensitive stuff. As we've all seen, right? We've always seen uh, different things coming back at us. Uh, and secondly, I, I do think it would be. Certainly good to have us review, uh, per suggest and approve question lists. I have no issue with that whatsoever. Um, and if anyone is, is a, is a, is a good consultant who's done this many, many times. They will have formulated this in a certain way so that they'll be able to answer why those questions are there and how they're going to be asked. But I will guarantee you that they will not answer all the questions the way you expect.
Sure.
Never happened, ever.
Right. Which is, which is what you expect, right? Uh, and you, you're going to expect positive and negative feedback. And, and, you know, you, you take it constructively. You, you, you take that information back and that's what you, that's what you do with it.
And if you get negative, you have to do explore why it's negative, right?
That's correct.
Be trivial things. I mean, it, well, it, it always comes out that way, but, but, you know, it, you just need to sort of follow the thread that's, that the. Individual you're talking to is, is really trying to generate. So.
So do I understand correctly, we, we have consensus on the second sentence to state, we'll review and approve the question list and process in advance period, but we, we don't. But the timing, we'll just leave it out or say early, I don't know. So we don't.
I can start it, I can start it this year, but we can, like I said, we can focus on trying to have it next year and. The way I was envisioning it, we find the right person. Um, they're going to do a lot of interviews on the senior managers and stuff like that because um. We, we do want to find out about how to hire people in the future and a lot of that feedback, constructive feedback you get back from your existing employees. Um. And, but you know, they can make a presentation to you. Uh, I, I'd have to look and see if it can be an executive session. Because it had, it's not going to be released. And you can look at it all and have your comments and stuff and have the psychologist standing there of why this and why that. I'm sure you've taken Myers-Briggs. Tests and you can't figure out what the question is really getting at, but at the end of the day, I get a note that says she's a perfect accountant, but. That's uh, that's the way it goes. So uh, there's a lot to it and um. If we're going to spend any amount of money, I, I want to make sure that it is absolutely helping me and the senior managers make, make this better. You know, it's, it's not being catered to the one or two people who may be a little disgruntled, whose answer could be. Well, I just don't like change. I wanted to go back to the way it always was. That's not the purpose of, of an employee satisfaction. Are you getting the training you need? Are you, you know, these type of things? So let's, let me start on it and um, and I will bring it to you. And um, and we'll take it from there. I hear what you're saying. I don't, it's not going to get done by twenty twenty-two, but everything else is um, is, is fine.
Okay.
Phil. So are we? I, just to wrap up, are we, are we accepting these edits or?
Hang on, hang on. Let me have my, you know. I have, you know, my problem with the fact I don't like the word approve. You know, the only jurisdiction we have under one sixty-four, I'm going to remind everybody, is over the general manager. We don't have jurisdiction over anybody in the department. State law.
That's right.
I, I would say, you, you know, instead of using the word approve, recommend. Recommend adjustments, recommend uh, adjustments to the question list and survey process. I would change it to approve to recommend.
Okay.
Okay. I, I would suggest we also don't determine the timetable. I would let the general manager determine the timetable because she's got the union negotiations to go through.
Yeah, I, I, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why I, I put it like, develop a plan, work on it and then. Understanding that the negotiations were going on, you know, have it roll out in early twenty twenty-two. Not, I don't want to see it in June twenty twenty-two. I'd really like to see it. In the beginning of the year. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, you don't know how things are going to go, but if, if we work towards developing it and. You know, it's ready, you know, say on the shelf ready at a certain point when Colleen feels it's appropriate, then we can go with it. I, that's right. I figured six months was a. Was enough time to develop something and then when appropriate, release it.
Okay. Yep.
So I, just my two cents, I'm unclear. We're looking to. Develop something over the next six months and roll it out, maybe January, February, just to get it. Have dates that are. Reasonable.
Yeah, I'd like to have someone come in and do a little presentation to you probably at the beginning of the year, right? Because we have budget coming up. And from now to the end of the year, you're going to be very busy with the budget and uh, this cost of service and the. The choice programs and stuff. So. But this uh, psychologist or whoever, you know, think about how the timing, what we went through with the residential and commercial survey. There was a lot of effort put in by Blue Wave, um, Blue, whatever it was called, about when to do it. So this person is going to get all the feedback from Janet, like, you know, this is what's happening here. This is what's going on here. They'll formulate the questions. And then they'll probably make a recommendation saying, you know, this is, this is typically when companies roll out surveys and, you know, we'll listen to their recommendations. As part of their report and then, then we'll make a decision.
I, I, I guess the, the point is I, I don't want to start that process in January. And then, and then start selecting a company and going through that because then that's going to potentially push that out till May, June.
Yeah.
You know.
No, I started to be six month goal, right?
Okay. Yep.
That I, that I should have started in January, so I'm already late.
That's right, Colleen.
Yeah, it's an annual goal, so I'll just say I'm late.
Okay. So that, that, that's good. I, I think we can move on from at that point. I think we agree that um. On, on the, on the changing that Phil suggested and the timeframe, I, I believe the consensus r- right here. I, I, I don't want to speak for you, Marlena, but um. We're okay with say, early first quarter, two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, that's when it will be conducted. Not when we're going to first get our first PowerPoint from a consultant. It will be cool. That will start this year and then the survey will happen in the beginning of the year. That's my understanding.
I actually liked the way it was written to begin with. Hire a consultant, uh, whatever Bob wrote there. Hire a consultant to do a employee survey. Uh, to be done early twenty twenty-two.
It's, so, I'm, 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 I'm okay with that.
What's there now is, 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 that's right.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, well, yeah, that, it looks like the edits have been put in.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks perfect.
Fine, as written.
Okay. Um, so there was a couple more of them.
Before you go into those, can I make a suggestion? Because this was the 11 that we started with and we just made a bunch of edits to them. And I think we, we have consensus. Why don't we vote on these 11? And then the others are separate because they're just kind of things from, you know, crazy Dave. Other people have some wacky ideas too. I don't know.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve the 2000. Roll down to the page so I can read the top.
The first 11.
The 2021 proposed goals for the general manager, items one through 11 only.
As amended.
As edited, as edited.
As edited during this meeting.
Thank you. Edin.
All right.
Peter, I.
Mr. Pacino, I.
Calvin, I.
Mr. Stanback, I.
Just call it right. Oh, passing. Oh, votes. Okay.
And I agree because you have to get me to agree.
Okay. Six, six oh.
I agree.
Okay.
Who are perfectly agree.
If you wanted to put up the Dave's suggestions.
These will all go over very well, I promise. Actually, there's one or two that people might like.
I'd actually like to save the legal one for last because I have, I want to be able to share my screen. So if we could do that.
That's fine. That's fine. And that's kind of, yeah, so let's go to the second one. Let this, let's skip, skip this, what's now number 11. I guess I just wanted to bring that one up. You know, we did vote five oh on the Ash Street site planning. We did vote five oh in March of 2020 to make that a goal. And there was, this is different than the bid, the business improvements district. It was like, because there was a big town planning process around our site. It is a prime downtown site. Now, this isn't anything that's going to happen in five years, but we should put an O in the water here and kind of go through the steps that we discussed last a year and a half ago.
Well, you voted to dismiss it during COVID. That's why.
Well, we voted that it was put on hold during COVID because of COVID, but now it's COVID is over. I mean, a year and four months have passed and it's not on the proposed goals. I'm proposing to put it back on the goals.
So one of the reasons why it, when we, when it came up in a quarterly meeting, what I said was there, there wasn't enough scope that the board of commissioners needed to provide more scope. Because um it's, it's too confusing about what the goal is. Now, the business improvement district is an HOA, same as like in a condo, which we can't be, be part of. That's what it is. It's an HOA.
And that's why I put in print. Sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean.
Yeah, no, that's, it's got nothing to do with the business improvement district.
Correct.
Okay, the Ash Street site plan was put on there because there was a number of MAPC, Mass Action Planning Committee conversations about how this would be re-envisioned. That's what it was, envisioning. So we looked at owning this building, owning the land. We own these buildings, but the town owns the land. And you said, everyone said to me, well, why don't you, instead of waiting for them to, to tell you, why don't you go and look? I wasn't sure what I was looking for. Was I looking for land? Was I looking for another suitable place to, for us to move to? We didn't finish the scope on it. And so I still don't really have what the action item would be. So I would need that to be defined. And I think I can start that this year, but this is certainly not something I can get done by the end of the year because people are still out in COVID and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess the spirit of it is that I think we as a commission and, and, and the manager, we should be, we should have a long term or what we're doing with all this real estate that we have in, in the primary of downtown. We could be making a statement about, we must be here. We think we can, you know, is this a place where we, we need to be for the next 50 years? What is our long term plan for the site other than little improvements or major improvements here and there? Is it, is it totally infeasible for us to ever move? Because it would cost $100 million. I mean, put some information out there and engage. And I also added a proposed goal for us as a commission to have a joint meeting with the select board and town staff to say, you know, what's going on here? We see all this stuff happening downtown. Here downtown, we have utility storage and truck parking on a prime site downtown. Is that the highest and best use for our downtown? And I would say, you know, we have to drive it as a board. It's not all on you. But part of it is you, you help us provide information about from operations standpoint, what would be required to move is what's the magnitude of a cost? What would be the needs? What would the site plan need be for you? What would it be for you to have to move everything or some of it? Could you just keep headquarters and move the trucks and equipment storage somewhere else? I mean, these kinds of questions. I take your point about, I mean, I feel like we defined this 14 months ago. We all agreed six oh in March, that that's why it was on there. Coming, coming a few months after a meeting when there was like 80 people, you know, talking about the site, all the town and then we had state reps and senators there. So I don't know, I, we, we, we've been kind of not part of that planning process.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, John, please.
You, you know, I, I think it's, it's a worthy thing to do. Unfortunately, with all the other things that are on the list in terms of trying to do things in Wilmington and elsewhere in terms of finding land. And we did look at Camp Curtis Guild and we looked at other places. We know all the sort of issues. And I, I throughout this entire process, I get the feeling that this is chasing rainbows. And what I mean by that is there's no set plan by the town. There's no well definitive in terms of what they're going to use the land for, where it's going to go, or where we're going to go. And so I would like to see the town become more focused first in terms of really finding a, a good use for the property, a better use for it. I agree with you on that. But I don't think we should add it to our list at this point in time. I, I think we're, like I said, I think it's a, it's, it's something that's ill-defined and we've got so many other things to try to accomplish this year. Until we get input from the town, very definitive input that they would like to see us move or try to do something else with the facility. And then we can find something of better value in terms of where we move to with all our trucks and everything else. And the storage, by the way, let's not forget all of our, our inventory, et cetera. I mean, we've got something that's working. Why are we going to try and mess with that in the short term if it's working already for us and doing very well? So I would suggest we table this until we get some more, something more definitive from the town.
So my proposal in terms of what we do tonight is just have a vote on, on this, this particular line item where I make a motion to add this as a goal because it was on on March 2020. And I hereby make that motion. If I may, and if anybody wants a second, then we can vote on whether we want to add this to the goals. Same goal that was, we wrote and voted on 16 months ago.
Oh, excuse me, but it's not, but it's for the same reason why it was taken off and it's the same reason why John, what John just said, it's not definitive. I, if you gave me a scope and said, I, I want you to evaluate the cost of us moving somewhere else, how much land would we need? You know, what would be an office space that would be, you know, more, you know, allow a more holistic, less siloed layout of the employees? And it wouldn't be in an area where 52 trucks would cause noise.
But I, I take your point. You want more definition. I, I would add the words, you know, subject to a, a additional scope definition at a summer meeting of the commission. So we could, we could do that and sharpen up what it is we're asking for.
Dave, Phil had a point, please.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, this is not a goal for the general manager. This is a goal for the board. This is our goal. This is not something we should assign to the general manager.
Yeah.
We, we're the ones that should be carrying this out. I wouldn't put this on the general manager's goals. I'd put this on our, our table.
Well, I agree. And I, and I agree with that, Phil. I actually have it as one of our, I added it also as one of our goals that we need to convene a joint meeting and kind of lead here. And we just may need information as part of that. That's kind of.
So, you know, I, I wouldn't put it here. Maybe we put it down into the board's goals instead. At this point to define, and we need to redefine it. You know, I, I've talked to people about Camp Curtis Guild. I don't see us going there anytime soon.
Okay.
At this point, I don't know where else you're going to put.
In the interest of keeping the meeting short, I agree with you. So let's move on. I withdraw my motion. And I think that we should, we should add it to a board goal that we have a joint meeting and like actually have a conversation about the topic. That's all.
I, I, if you're going to withdraw the.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Go to the next one.
Next one would be.
Roll up, roll up.
Yep. You gotta go up.
With the mystery.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, this is one that we, we, we're going for electrification. We've, we've had a lot of good stuff happen. And this one just occurred to me this morning. And you know, that if we could somehow try, I know we don't control the towns or we don't control developers, but if we could at least try to get our, ourselves in front of and, and try to promote town process steps where when big new developments come in, that the developers get encouraged to do full, like, full electrification rather than put all this brand new gas infrastructure. You know, the, the new projects downtown have collectively have hundreds of new gas meters, you know, within a couple of blocks of our headquarters. And I walk by them like, geez, I wish, how could, how, I don't know how we could do it. But, but if these developers could get put through a step where they, they talk to us and how, how could they electrify and have electric heating and electric stoves rather than another 50 gas meters for another 100 years, you know?
So, Dave, Dave, if I, if I may, you know, I, we, I deal with brand new buildings going up, $90 million project, $100 million project. And that's the biggest debate on the site. They talk about how much power versus how much gas. It's a strictly economic decision for that developer. And, and can you, can you supply enough load for that person to do that? I tell you, in the downtown area, I don't know how the feeders are trained. Hamed would know the better answer to that. But if all of those built went all electric, we'd be probably building a new feeder down Haven Street right now. I, I, it's coming down the street just to, just to handle the, the load of just a small amount of building. So that's, that's a developer based decision on, on the economics of the project. So I, I don't see how we can, I don't see dictate any, any type of.
Yeah, I, that's why it's great to have an actual utility engineer on board.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, you know, if we could somehow encourage, encourage as part of these development review processes, how, how could they consider more electrification? That's the spirit of it.
Let me tell you what we are doing. So maybe this speaks to some of it. So we recently were able to get on, for example, in Reading, the design review team. And we get the site plans upfront. Now, you know, since I've been here, I've made recommendations in all four towns about, you know, changing their planning board and, you know, having stanchions put in for electric vehicles when they're building, having maybe put solar, you know, stanchions on roofs and, and how they build things. But I'm not in charge of the town making that part of the building code.
Correct.
But what we do say is we try to look at these projects and talk about what we can offer, even inventing new rebate programs. And IRD has been really good about that. But again, we can lead them, the horse to the water, but, right. So we already, we already do that. And again, even with these electric vehicle grants, it'd be a lot easier if we, if they, we had the power there. Bringing, bringing electric vehicle charges, people think it's pretty easy, but it's not. It's really difficult because you don't have the electric service in that area. So yes, proactively designing will come under, a lot of that will come under the stretch code when the town of Reading adopts green communities. And that will help a lot of bringing that into a proactive mechanism of energy conservation and electrification for sure. So, but we do work with all four towns right now doing this, but we just, we just can't tell them what to do. So.
I, 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 I don't, I don't see how it, it, it's, it's just not possible to put as a goal because you just don't control it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, the goal wasn't to control it, but to try to promote a process. That's all. I withdraw this one based on the conversation. I appreciate the conversation and as somebody who walks by buildings with millions of gas meters that are brand new, I'm like, ah, you know, what can I do as a commissioner? And this is what I, so I put this on the, the goals and wasted five minutes of everybody's time. Let me, let me make a, let me just make a motion on the last one because I do think we are the policymaking body. Okay? Even if we do nothing else, we set policy. I would just like to see that if lobbying activity on behalf of us is proposed to be undertaken, that we should know what the positions are that are being lobbied for. And we should be told what those are and approve it, even if it's just verbally, hey, this is what we're doing next month. Rather than learning after the fact, I think I've gone in and seen invoices where we're paying $600 an hour for lobbying. And I'm like, what is that for? And I don't know.
No.
I'd just like to see us know what, what the lobbying positions are.
So we can make a list. I will tell you that there's lobbying, there's lobbying on behalf of municipal light plants going on every day, all day with all MLPs. You saw this morning when I sent out the testimony that I wrote for making the existing bills on green communities better. And you know, we use lobbying services through E and E that took that into, to provide the testimony, my testimony for me today. So this happens on a regular basis. We could have FERC, John Coyle has lobbyists that are helping us with FERC issues. That would be quite an undertaking. If you could give me a specific one that you might not be happy with, but most of them are just, they're lobbyists that are sticking up for MLPs to ensure that the MLP laws are being followed.
Right.
So it's not. Yep.
I hear, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate that work. What frankly, what drove it is I'm pretty sure we were lobbying for a biomass. We were lobbying to, basically, we paid to lobby for the Palmer biomass plant indirectly or directly. It happened. So we, E and E lobbied for it, you know, our lobby, lobby for the word and lobbying for the regular regulations. And I think we paid $600 an hour to have that done. Correct me if I'm wrong. So that's what drove me to say, hey, do we want local control or don't we? And I think that we should, and if it's a monthly brief, hey, guys, I'm sorry. Hey, commissioners, here, here are the things that are on our deck. It's certainly big ones. We're reasonable people. It's not absolutist, every, every nickel and dime thing. But let's, let's be in the loop on what we're paying people. Okay? What rate payer funds are we paying for, for what positions? That's what I think should be. We should be provided with that as part of monthly or maybe just quarterly reports, whatever makes sense and is reasonable.
Or you can just add that to policy 19 then because um I mean, you're, you're pointing out one and I can't, I don't know that it was $600, but you know, we, you know, Deidre Lawrence, they wrote those, those master contracts. And for, for that project. And we certainly can talk about the lobbying, but I, I think what we're missing here is all the lobbying that happens all day long, every day, that saves the MLP so much money and time. You know, when we intervene in FERC, it's, it's a significant amount of work. You know, sometimes you may call that legal expenses, but we're the little dogs and we get kicked around a lot and we want people to protect us.
Sure. I just think we as a commission should want to know what the positions are that are being fought for. It's a gas peaker somewhere or a biomass plant or whatever. We're spending many thousands of dollars and I think it was $600 an hour. Surely there's an hour in there when a summary could be made for us. What, what is, what are the policies?
Okay, I guess I'm asking, are you just, are you just talking about when MLPs are lobbying for a generator? Are you talking about the lobbying that happens all day long with all kinds of FERC rules? Like we've got, we've got 10 or 12 of them going right now.
John wants to say something.
Please, John. Yeah, thank you. Just, just two points. One is that we did cover what the legal costs have been over the last couple of years and it actually been going down. We, we covered that in an executive session a couple of times ago. The second point is, you know, we're, we're required to, the board is required to allow the GM to manage all aspects of the operational aspects of the RMLD. And that includes choice of law firm or the need for opinions and analysis. Otherwise, I think the, the point that's being made is it could become penny wise and pound foolish.
I think you're arguing.
If I may, please, I'm still talking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, sure.
And, and so I just think that you have to trust this excellent manager that we're requiring to be excellent to do the right thing. And I think she's doing the right thing. And I think we just need to abide by that. If we want her policy 19, want to review it on a periodic basis, I have no issue with that. That's fine. But I don't think we should make that a goal and try to tell the GM how to micromanage her business because it goes from the law, it'll go into other aspects of everything that she's doing. Everything that becomes a cost, we go, let's examine that yet one more time. And I think it's a waste of our time, quite frankly.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair. I think this made, if I may.
Yes.
I, I think John just made an excellent critique against the legal bills. This, that we're talking about, what are the positions that we are paying to have lobbied for? That's what this is about. This isn't about legal costs. It's about what, what is the lobbying activity that's being done on our behalf? We should, we should. We should, we should be getting reports on what, you know, what these positions are that are being fought for at Beacon Hill or in Capitol Hill that we're paying for, but that we don't get told about. That we should be told what the positions are and have a chance to say, hey, as a commission, do we agree with these positions? And if we don't, why are we here? If we're not setting policy, what are we doing here? I mean, really, I mean, are we local control or not? And we may agree with eighty percent of it, but maybe there's a time when last year, if we knew what we were paying to lobby for, we might have said, hmm, maybe we shouldn't be lobbying for that. That's where I'm coming from here.
So can I, can I, so this morning, when I sent in my green communities testimony on behalf of the operations of all four communities, you wanted me to get permission to have a lobbyist present my testimony this morning at ten? Like, I would have had to have gotten a vote to do that because that happens all the time. That's why I said, are you talking about lobbying for a generator? Because that's the one you're calling out. I don't mind giving updates quarterly to the board, and you can put it under Policy Nineteen, but telling me to get a vote before we lobby for something, you know, we're, there's interventions going on at FERC level all twenty-four-seven. There's lobbying happening all the time.
Okay, I'll remove prior approval, but provide a report.
Under Policy Nineteen.
Activity on behalf of RMLD is proposed and undertaken. Provide positions and costs for our review, period.
If you put it in Policy Nineteen.
I so moved, and let's vote on it. If I have a second? Anybody?
I second it.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
And the motion language is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yep.
Let's get the wording up there.
Yeah, so if, you know, provide a, as part of the regular monthly meeting, provide a report on lobbying activity being done on behalf of RMLD, comma, and ideally, if possible, allow us a chance for prior review and approval, if possible, period.
Erica, can we get that up on the board?
Only does it possible make it, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in an inappropriate spot as a goal. It needs to go in Policy Nineteen.
Well, at this point, we're going to vote on it, Colleen, okay? So, yes, Marlene.
Okay.
I'll simply, let me clarify what this is. Can you just make it be, provide monthly reports on lobbying activity being done on behalf of the RMLD, period?
Well, Bob, I have a comment because I'm not sure what happens when you vote because it's supposed to be cooperatively agreed. It's not supposed to be a vote until after we cooperatively agree.
Okay, so in other words, we're not allowed to set a goal unless you agree to the goal?
It's cooperatively agree to the goals. So so far.
I just edited this and took fifteen of the teeth out of it based on everything you said. All it is, is report to us on what the lobbying is now. But what we do to weaken it?
No, is it, is it, is it better sitting in Policy Nineteen or is it better sitting in the goal? Bottom line, John, go ahead.
I think it belongs in Policy Nineteen myself because if you're going to get into these issues of, and I agree with Colleen, that's what's in our contract, that she does have to agree to the goals. Otherwise, what's the point? If you're giving somebody a goal that they can't possibly meet for whatever reason, at the end of the year, you can come back and nitpick on that particular thing and say, you know, you didn't do it. But, you know, she wasn't able to do it just because of the circumstances that are involved in these things that are lobbying all the time. I completely agree that we should know what our stance is on lobbying. That's not even a question. But let's put it in Policy Nineteen. I mean, it's something that we should, we should ask for and at our quarterly meetings or even monthly meeting for that matter.
Because, so just to clarify.
I'm a little, at this point, I think the Colleen's point, they are joint goals, right? They're agreed-upon goals, they're not forced.
Sure, okay, so where we are is, it's, a couple of words got flipped around. I just, I reduced it and simplified it to provide monthly report on lobbying done on behalf of RMLD. Monthly report on lobbying being done on behalf of RMLD.
So.
That's all. And now, and now this is considered an onerous goal? To simply tell us what's being done on our behalf?
No, it's just Policy Nineteen has me providing you with monthly, quarterly, and it just would be easier to say, okay, every month, we've got to do this. Every quarter, we got to do this, and we just follow Policy Nineteen, and it's forever instead of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, well, this is going to end up being the only goal actually voted and motioned on that came from the commission in its whole process. We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, hold on, Phil, please, hold on. Yep, hold on, Dave.
So, Colleen, do you agree with this or not? Are you in agreement with this or not?
Well, what I had asked was all lobbying or lobbying that's done on behalf of a generator that the board would have to have approval on? Because I could get a call and there say, this is what's happening at the ISO. FERC is, we're going to intervene into FERC. There is lobbying that happens as part of that. John Coyle sends it out. We all have to answer within fifteen minutes if we want to be part of this. And I certainly can't get approval. Now, if you want to know about every single one of those, then that's fine. I can present that on a regular basis. I just wanted to know whether it was generator-related or all business.
It just, on behalf of means we are paying for it. And since we're paying for it, it means the lobbying is being done on our behalf. So it's simply a report to tell us what the positions are that people are lobbying for, that we are paying them to lobby for, and that ratepayers are paying them to lobby for. That's all this is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I come back with the same question. I mean, it doesn't seem like Colleen is agreeing with this.
No.
Therefore, this motion is probably out of order.
Well, then, why are we having this meeting? I mean.
Dave, I, you know, right now, I, I think that the point is if it's a contentious goal, right? It's not helping, and where it can reside someplace else and have the same effect. I, I'm struggling to see why we couldn't move it over to Policy Nineteen, still get the same information that we want. It's just not, regardless of whether it's in the goals or it's in a policy, we're still going to get the information.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm struggling to see why it couldn't be in both places because it would be a new goal. I understand Policy Nineteen is appropriate for it, but going forward, and we would all be acclimating to learning to learn and review these as they're presented. And I think that it would be a goal for the rest of this year and going forward that we would modify maybe even as we go along. But for now, it would just be providing a report, and we would be more aware of where ratepayer money is being spent.
I'm more inclined to withdraw the motion at this point.
Is, can you do that?
Can I ask another question? Are you specifically talking about lobbyists or attorneys that act as lobbying? Because it's a big difference. There's the word lobbying, and that's done by lobbyists, and then it's done by attorneys. There's a lot of people who lobby in what they are intervening for the RMLD. I just want to understand because, and I'm not objecting to it. I will share this with you, but this is a lot of work to put together a report every single month on how much potential lobbying could be being done for every issue that is in the MLP sphere. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, we have monthly reports on the most trivial stuff about how many poles got replaced. Not that it's trivial, but whereas the big, the big policies, we don't have the visibility in the reports on what the legislation is that we're fighting for or that we're fighting against. I just think we need to do our job as policymaking body and asking you to deliver a report on where the spending is going.
It's fine, you all got a report this morning and showed you exactly what was happening. I usually send those out when that's happening.
We never got any reports when we were lobbying for biomass. I mean, come on.
But Dave, I, you know, that's in the past, but, you know, and it was legal at that time, and it might have been a good deal, and it probably was something that was attractive, right? So things change over time, right? That's the one, the one thing that we all know. I would have expected we would have been lobbying for being part of a biomass plant that was renewable, because that's how it was, it was, it was appeared as renewable at the time. Again, different point of view, right? Wait, I don't want, I don't want to discuss Policy Thirty, you know, again, over and over and over.
Point taken, but we're not debating the merits of the biomass. We're debating, we're wanting the information about what we're lobbying for, plain and simple. And it's, I think we, I would appreciate it, Mr. Chair, if you could allow a vote on a single item that's not generated by the general manager to proceed. I mean, it's like, it's clearly going to be a three-two vote, so let it happen.
Good point, point taken, okay.
Can I clarify something? A lot of those goals were not generated by me. Those were goals, those were requests made by the commissioners in meetings for me to achieve. I wrote them down, but they came from you guys. I didn't just generate those.
No, understood, understood.
I never saw those. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say to bring this to a close. If there are no objections to call, from Colleen.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Phil, could you read the motion?
What is, now have Dave read it.
Move that we add a, the general manager shall provide a monthly report on lobbying being done on behalf of the RMLD.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I propose an amendment to remove the word monthly and make it quarterly.
Yes, Erica, could you please?
Okay, I'll accept that. I mean, I did mean monthly, but if that's more palatable for you guys to reject, that's fine. Actually, since you're going to reject it, can I go back to what I, what I asked?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I think.
Okay, fine.
At this point, I start to vote. Okay. All in favor? Please say aye.
Tabitha, aye.
Bita, aye.
All those opposed?
Just step back, aye.
No.
Okay. Please help the vote was three to two against that.
But I, Mr. Chair. I would like to see this come into Policy Nineteen, though. I think that is, that'd be the direction to give the department, but this is part of Policy Nineteen. And if you want, I can make a motion that we consider that to be added to Policy Nineteen.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessary, Phil. I think it's going to be added to Policy Nineteen. Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item.
Yeah, I think, I think we just had the existing board goals, and I added one about the site plan. I mean, about a joint meeting that we should have about the site, which I think we kind of agreed, but Phil, this is kind of Phil's idea, too. I don't think these will be controversial. I just added public input on the vision statements, so it was clear that we'd allow the public to talk about it. I added one saying we should have a joint meeting with the select board and just to talk about the site and to Phil's point, frankly.
Are there any objections?
I mean, I'm happy to wrap this up. If you guys, with these, as a board, I don't think we need Colleen to agree with what the board says its goals are. I propose that I move that we pass these four goals for ourselves as amended and as shown on the screen right now.
Is there any further discussion?
Guess we need a second, right?
My question is, how do we define convene? Define convene for me.
I think that's what the chairs do, right? We're secretly.
You know, again, and maybe I go back to John's original comment here. We don't know what the town wants to do.
I think it's a good, it's a good to have a discussion, right? I think one of our goals, let's set something up this year and find out if there's a plan. If there's no plan, okay, there's no plan. If there, if there is a plan, okay, and they might say, well, we're looking to do something twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. At least that's the point, and then you can defer any type of strategy till it's appropriate.
It's just about a meeting, so we're talking to each other.
Yep, I agree about meeting, a meeting is a great idea.
So I just want to reiterate, I'm moving that these goals, that they're the same three goals with tiny tweaks that I think are non-controversial. And this additional convening of a joint public meeting is I move that we pass these four as written on the screen now.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can we have discussion first? Just.
Yep. Sure.
So the, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not against any of them. I just want to get clarification. So review the mission and vision statements with the general manager and public input. So when, is there a timetable set for that or how it's going to occur? And what if, you know, I have no issue with public input, but if the public decides they want to go a certain way and the board wishes to go another, or the general manager wants to go a different way, how do you resolve all of that? Is it through a vote or, I don't quite understand.
My answer to that is that we just want to make sure we allow the public to speak at our meetings about our proposed RMLD mission or vision statement. That's all, public input is just public input. Doesn't mean they vote on it or require us to do it. We just allow them to have input on it. That's all.
Okay, then, well, with public input, that's fine, period. Then it should be the board will review, update, vote on the mission. Because the way it reads now is the public's going to vote on it.
It says with, with GM and public input, the board, then just add the board shall review.
That's, that's fine. That's fine, I just don't want it to read.
Yeah, no, okay, so it's an English thing. So just add, you know, the board shall review with GM and public input, comma, the board shall review. But since these are board goals, it's kind of implied that we're referring to the board here. We shall review, update, and vote, but we can add it, make it explicit, the board shall review.
I think it needs to be explicit, Dave, because otherwise, I mean, words are everywhere.
Yeah, fine, that's fine. You can add the board shall on all four of them. The board shall set long-term strategy, the board shall convene, blah, blah, blah. But add it to number two, to John's point.
Erica, I think you're doing that in the background. I'm hoping.
Okay, as amended, so.
So.
Any other tweaks?
Anybody else have any input? Okay. So put to a vote. All in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Tabitha, aye.
Bita, aye.
Mr. Goldrey. So. All passing, five-zero.
Well, thank you for everybody for tolerating all that. We're not.
It's okay.
Your tolerance and intolerance is appreciated by me.
Now, everybody's got their opinion, and everybody's entitled to it.
Hey, listen, at least we didn't vote on the lobby color. That would have taken all day.
By the way, I'll skip the legal thing. We didn't talk about it, just forget it. I withdraw it to John's point and others, but anyway.
I have some, I actually have some slides that Wendy did a while ago that I will send out anyways just to refresh so that everybody remembers all the different areas where there's legal expenses and then Marlene and I can, Marlene and I can catch back up and go over them.
I do on the legal costs, Phil, that Colleen has done a much. I do, and the legal costs, Phil, the Colleen has done a much better job reading that in than previous administrations, you know?
Probably because Janet's here.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm late for a dinner thing, do you guys mind if I drop off?
No, but we're missing the most important part of this meeting, Dave, and that was to, uh, have a quarterly check-in on all the awesome, excellent things that I've done year-to-date, we haven't done that.
Okay, is that on the agenda?
It's part of, we set the goals and we're in a quarterly, uh, quarterly update, where we, where we, you know, kumbaya together and it's all cohesive.
We already kumbayad.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I, I do have to go, I'm gonna watch it tomorrow, though, if there's a presentation, I will watch it on, on the TV tomorrow, I do have to, I gotta fly, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye-bye.
Night. Okay. So I don't know if that was, uh, very, very good sarcasm on your point, Colleen, or was it actually a real item that we have on, on the agenda, if we have to review anything?
Well, quarterly was supposed to have, the goals were supposed to be set right at the beginning of the year, but we were focusing on all the change with policy thirty and the clean bill, and you know, that was super important, so. What I did was I wrote down everything that you guys asked me to do and make a priority, and that's kind of where the goal list came from in addition to a couple that I added, so that's where the goal list came. But the quarterly check-in, um, is supposed to be kind of talking about, you know, so the ones that I said that are completed or I'm working on. Uh, you know, is there any issues with them? You know, it's supposed to be, uh, the commissioners acknowledge accomplishment, provide feedback on that, um. I give, I give assessments on, you know, how staff is doing, so, you know, I know it's already late and maybe we can do this again in, um, would be October. Uh, that would be the focus of the meeting, is, um, I can send back around what Dave Hennessy and Dave Talbot sent out and what we vote, um, Dave Hennessy and Tom O'Rourke sent out. About what we're supposed to do here, I can, uh.
Yeah, they, I mean, quite frankly, we've been, uh, late, uh, for years in terms of doing the evaluation, even with the old evaluation, and we've been months and months and months off. And I do wish we could get onto a schedule where we could catch up and get it done on a, on a, on a, you know, on a quarterly basis, like we said we were going to do. And yet these other things have always popped in, I mean, COVID, not the least, of course. Uh, heavy come in, so, um, I would suggest that a board goal for this year, and maybe we, we add it later, is to get our act together and call special meetings so that we're on track for evaluation of the general manager, so that there's no catch-up that has to happen six months on a same.
Okay, that sounds fine, it just, uh, I, I, you know, I agreed to changing how we were evaluating me, because I thought it was going to be, you know, really positive and be able to talk about all the accomplishments, uh, that, you know, staff has worked really hard and, um, managing them and prioritizing them, and I think that's why they were all here, um, but I'll have them come back in October, um, but, you know, I, I would, at that meeting, like to get into, um, how you think we're doing, how you think the projects are going, what, how you think the goals are going. Um, you know, what are the barriers, what are the obstacles, what is, maybe some more support that we need from the commissioners to make things happen, uh, it may be a discussion like that, um, in, in the fall would be really helpful. I think it would be helpful for the staff, too.
No, I, I, I just want to say I greatly appreciate, you know, every, every month, you know, that, that there's always an unbelievable amount of information between Greg, Wendy, everybody who's, I don't want to, Janet, I'm not excluding you, Kathleen, I'm, I'm, I don't want to make it seem like that, but every, every month, you guys put together a fantastic package, so. I, 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 I think that, that, it, it feels to me like it's a monthly check-in, not a quarterly check-in, you know, we're getting information and feedback from everybody, uh, all along, I didn't forget you, Hamid, you're on the bottom of the screen, but blacked off there, sorry, but, um, but a, a, absolutely, I, I, so, I know uh, if, if you feel like it's more of a how you're performing against your goals and that's what's necessary. Yeah, uh, I, we, we could do that, I think we could accomplish that in a separate meeting and set, set now like we did today. You know, on a, on a, on a separate timetable.
Well, we went from, we, we went from, and, you know, a, a conventional annual evaluation to a quarterly positive, you know, acknowledgement of accomplishments and, and positive feedback, what's working, what's not, so. You know, I'm just hearing that, you know, maybe some of the presentations are about putting in polls is, is not what you want, but as we add more and more things to policy nineteen, you know, outside services, legal services, now lobbying services. Um, we, we've got a whole huge list, so maybe we, what we need to do is make a chart and say, okay, for this month, you're going to hear about these things, but you're not going to get the reliability report and you're not going to get the financial report, you're going to get these. And we decide so that, you know, if there's certain things that, you know, you don't think are important and you don't care about them, I can send them to you in a memo. And we can, we can do it differently, but I would rather get positive feedback about what we're doing right than a comment about, you know, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't need to hear that at a meeting, you know, like, that's not useful to me, I, I would rather hear that beforehand, here's what will be useful to me. And, and we can change it so that, um, but, but talk about that in a positive way, because I want to keep staff excited about the, the projects and the presentations that they put together, we work really, really hard on them, but if you're not finding that that information is the most useful, I want to be able to switch it up and, and provide you, uh, what you do need. So.
Colleen, not, not everyone feels the way one particular commissioner feels, you know, so you need to, hopefully you appreciate that.
I, 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 I wouldn't, John, I wouldn't clarify, you know, quantify it like that, I, I, I think that's, you know, I, it's greatly, I'm sure we, we all greatly appreciate what, what the staff does every, every month, it's just, it was just, I'm, a, a comment, so I, I would say, yeah, it's i, i, if, if somebody feels like that's you know, what they want to see in a report, and I, I, I do agree, it, there's so much information that gets to get jammed in, everything doesn't fit in two hours, right? It barely fits into three hours, right, it's supposed to be two hours, and, uh, but, um, so it, it, I, I think trucking, chunking things off month after month, I think might be a much better approach, rather than trying to accomplish, like, we did that, we did the, um, financial report, right, great, the next, next month, maybe, you know, Greg does a report, then after that, Hamid does a report, and we just keep going on, and then we do an HR report, I, I, I think, you know, if you have a, you have an idea, you know how long the presentations are going to be, you put them together, what you feel goes up to two hours, then, okay, then we do that. Doesn't have to be the same, same. Every, you know, that, it's a, sorry.
I, well, I can try to put together a schedule, because we've got a lot going on between now and the end of the year, right, it's the summer's going to be over soon, unfortunately, but we'll be heading into negotiations, uh, well, we're, we're going to need to talk to, about that, that's going to be a lot of work. We have the budget coming up, we got the cost of service study, we got the new retail, I mean, uh, uh, rate programs. You know, possibly a time of use EV, uh, additional timeframe for pushing, uh, charging off till later. So all that's coming in between now and the end, and there's a lot of deadlines of how we put the information into the town, so it segues into their budget. So maybe what I can do is put together a calendar and kind of lay it out. And that way, the chairman can work on that with the, um, set in the agenda. Now, we're going to have to stuff bids in there and other things will come up, but we'll try to also include all of the policy nineteen, because we, we haven't been making all those presentations, policy nineteen says every month. We do legal twice a month, twice a year, so some of it's just not realistic, and they take a lot of work to put them together. And we, like you said, you, you'd have a ten-hour meeting if we did it all, so why don't I try to lay it all out? And I'll present that in July, and maybe you guys can take a look at it, and if that's what you want to try, we can at least try that between now and the end of the year.
I, and I, I, I'd like to defer it to John and, and, and Phil at this point, I mean, you guys developed a formulaic uh, presentation that, that, that you've received and, and myself as well. Over the, over the last years, you know, so, and, and I know it's, it's, it's full, it's extremely full, so I, 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 I'm, what's your feedback on that?
I, I'm very happy, uh, you know, I'm, I'm all about change management, I'm willing to try anything and see if it works, and maybe it's better, so. Um, if it makes the flow easier, we understand it better, communication is better, and it's less of a burden on Colleen and her staff to do it in a staggered fashion, that's fine, I really have no issue with that.
Right. Well, then maybe when, I'm sorry, Phil, maybe when we're looking at policy nineteen, we can change certain things that you want me to show, maybe you can say the general manager will do this three times a year, and then we fit it in, and as it gets done three times a year, instead of, that will be done monthly.
So, Mr. Chair, just in my two cents. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with rotating some of these things, I mean, I'm, I always love to hear Hamid talk, but I don't need to hear him heat every, every month. You know, we can always go, you know, quarterly or bimonthly, and, you know, Wendy can always go, you know, either bimonthly or quarterly, too. To rotate that and have us more time for things. I mean, I tell you a story, when I got on the board, the meetings went one hour. One hour. You knew a lot of decisions were getting made outside of the boardroom.
Right, Phil, really, wow.
One hour.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just have three small questions, and for Colleen, too. Is the staff at the Ash Street campus back there full-time? Or are they still fully remote, is there a in-between situation for them right now?
Senior staff has been here all through COVID. We didn't have any remote senior staff, everyone came to work every day, including me.
Yes.
And then the team A and team B that were put on remote. Uh, because operations was A and B on-site, just separated to keep them safe, so we wouldn't wipe out a team. But then the business office was team A, TB rotated at home, but everyone came back to work in April.
And are we having a policy nineteen dedicated meeting this summer, and from my new perspective, these meetings are packed by amazing presentations by administration, but it is a lot and really diverse, it's the most diverse two hours I can come up with, so maybe, um, to Phil's point, quarterly or month, um, bimonthly for some of them would be, yeah, less work for them.
I agree, let, let me work on a schedule for July, but in July, we're going to go back to policy nineteen, that'll be on there. But because we got so many other things to get done by the end of the year, let me put it on a schedule and present it to you. And then we can see what fits around it. And we'll make recommendations, just like you said, maybe Wendy will be every other week, and Hamid will be every other week, and we'll do it like that, and I'll lay it out, see what everybody thinks. Does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Right.
All right. Any other comments concerns this evening? And, all right. Phil, if you could, please.
Move to the board of commissioners, adjourn the regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stepback, aye.
Vida, aye.
Mr. Goldrey. All right, everybody, enjoy, happy Fourth of July.
You too.
Stay, stay cool.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.